Negotiations remain sealed until such time as an agreement is reached.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Disclosure of executive session votes. Mr. Luzon.
We had eight votes in the executive session. The first vote was for home instruction request. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, McAllister, and Stanley. Second vote was approving executive session minutes of October 22, 2019, home instruction request. We had six in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, Stanley. Abstaining: Abbott and McAllister. Third vote was of the executive session minutes of October 22, 2019, M O A between NEA Cherahoe and Cherahoe Regional School Committee. Six in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, Stanley. Abstaining: Abbott and McAllister. Fourth vote was approval of contract negotiations ground rules. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, McAllister, and Stanley. Fifth vote: Approval of NEA ESP Subcommittee Members. Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor: Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, McAllister, Stanley. Abstaining: Abbott. Sixth vote, concerning a Cherahoe Administrator to observe negotiations. Zero in favor, eight opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. Opposed: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, McAllister, and Stanley. Seventh vote: Approval of NEA ESP Contract Proposal. Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Loyal, McAllister, and Stanley. Abstaining: Luzon. Tenth vote was to come out and visit you folks. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor: Abbott, Callahan, Day, Dimoff, Luzon, Loyal, McAllister, and Stanley.
Thank you.
Good job.
Recognition, sir.
Please join me in congratulating Ashaway School Teacher Lindsay Bliven and Middle School Teacher Christina Spavin, recipients of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science. Please join me in congratulating September Employees of the Month, Coria Clerk Anne Dowling, Ashaway School Lead Teacher Kelly Bakatora. October Employees of the Month, Middle School Technology Teacher Paul Dorita, High School Agriculture Science Teacher Stacy Pepperd. And the High School Unified Volleyball Team. But wait a minute. We're gonna do this bigger. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, so get up.
I'm getting up.
No, I'm gonna get up.
All right, you need help with anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, you got it. All right, I'm gonna leave you there.
Okay, so members of the school committee and the public, I'm happy to present to you the High School Unified Volleyball Team, but more importantly than just presenting them to you, they are the state champs. So why don't you all come over here? And coaches, where are you?
The back.
The back, coaches are in the back. Wait, who's the captain? So, coaches. I think you are.
Hi!
So we have, the only place in the world to get a pin. It's right here.
It's right here.
In the whole world. And I would ask you to introduce the team. Say a few words and give them their first name.
Absolutely.
All right, so I'll just start by introducing and giving the pins. All right, so we have a lot of members of our other team.
Could you please use the podium so that anybody who watches the video, they can hear?
How's that? We have a very, very fortunate this year. We have a large team, but unfortunately we have a lot of seniors that were with us for four years, and we're sad to say goodbye to them, but I'd like to acknowledge them as I acknowledge them, if that's okay. All right, so, and there's a bunch of people that are not here, but let's start with Max Feeney. He's one of our four, five seniors that have been here with us for four years. Max, come on over. Taylor Wood, another one of our seniors that has been with us for a while. And we have Emma Lakis. Come on over, Emma. Beatrice, freshman. We hope that we'll keep her for another couple, three more years. Michaela, same thing. Michaela Prusha, another freshman. Oh, I thought she was here. I marked her as being here. All right. Andrew, Andrew Haynes. Skylar Johnson. Skylar Johnson? Yeah, there she is. C J Haynes. Another freshman. Skylar Palumbo, another freshman. We're hoping to hang onto these guys for a while. Emma Pymer. Taryn Opelka, another of our seasoned seniors. Without some of these people, we would not have won this championship. Then we have Kale Drummond. Michael Yaskowitz. Sorry. Matthew Crossson. Did I miss anybody? I got everyone? I didn't miss anyone? And there's, we have more members that were not here, but this is, these are the members that we have here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We hope to, we hope to bring another championship next year as well. Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You guys doing a great job. Thank you. Love these guys. They're awesome.
Rycast. Want to say a few words?
Oh, please.
Absolutely.
Let's all squeeze in here. I would say that, oh geez, maybe we should put it up. It's all here. I'll just squat down to it. I would say that, I mean, obviously a championship can't be won without the team, but I think that these three coaches that we've been lucky to have for the past four years definitely had a major part in it because even when it looked like we were going tough against some of the undefeated teams, they never gave up hope on us. And they always made sure to, like, bring forth the values of unified and showing that, like, it's just team worth and just working together and just having fun in the game. And I think that it's brought a lot of us together over the years and made us, like, feel more of a family, more than, like, coming in as a freshman, you're just, you don't really know what's going on. You don't have a real community yet, and this really emphasizes that community and allows you to grow farther. Can you words back?
Yeah, they kinda said it all, but the coaches, the coaches really made sure that it was fun for everybody, especially the athletes, so that they could enjoy a sport that normally they wouldn't be able to participate in. So it was really, it's all a good opportunity, and they really did a good job to make it a great time for everybody.
Gonna miss it.
We're gonna miss it a lot.
Nicely done. Worth a class.
Thank you. It's been so much fun. Absolutely.
Congratulations again. And all the school committee joins me in congratulating you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. That was awesome. That was awesome. All right, this brings us to our next session, which is public forum. Any of the remaining members of the public that would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, now's your chance. No? Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to business. Yes, sir. We're ready.
So, letter A under business is simply to bring you in compliance with the school construction regulations and make you eligible for the $100,000 technical aid.
Yep.
So it's a long recommendation, but that's the reason for it. I recommend that you reconstitute the school facilities Subcommittee. Renamed it the School Building Committee and add the following to its charge. Undertake the necessity of school construction application process. Create an educational facility master plan per the memorandum of agreement dated October 22, 2019, in accord with RIC school construction regulations. You should appoint or reappoint members under this item. In the past, you appointed Craig Luzon, Ryan Callahan, and Catherine Juisty. I further recommend that you will add the superintendent of schools, director of administration and finance, Susan Rogers, director of buildings and grounds, Jason Sullivan, a representative of school principal, and a community member with architectural, engineering, construction experience to the committee. I recommend these actions to bring you into alignment with the memorandum of agreement dated October 22, 2019, to make Cherahoe eligible for $100,000 in technical assistance funding. The complete charge to the School Building Committee will be undertake the necessity of school construction application process, create the facility master plan, develop a deep knowledge of current school construction and financial incentives with a focus on newer and fewer. Seek input from constituency groups. Make a full and complete recommendation to the school committee by May 1, 2020, including operational impact upon which future action may be based.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I think we need, I believe that it should be amendment to that to clarify this so that we won't have any confusion amongst our towns that this be called a five-year plan, building committee plan, because by Cherahoe Act, we're supposed to go through the whole financial town meeting, have an eleven-member committee that has school, town council represented on the whole nine yards. So I think just to changing it to a five-year plan building committee would get us away from having anybody raise any questions, because I know there's some people out there that will be raising questions that were not following the Cherahoe Act.
So, on that, you're saying that just having a school building committee...
If you read the Cherahoe Act, it says you're building, it's spelled out how you have a school building committee.
Okay. Fifth person.
Day. Yes, Mr. Day is correct. The Cherahoe Act is very specific about how to form a building committee. This building committee is different than the one formed under the act. This is formed under school construction regulations, so you could simply, as Bill has suggested, call it the five-year capital plan building committee, and you should be fine.
So you want amendment?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Sylvia.
To amend, just seconded, to amend the renaming of the School Building Committee to the five-year capital plan committee, building committee. Discussion. George.
Now, if this ultimately results in a proposal for a specific building, how would it fall into compliance with the Cherahoe Act?
You would have to go to the district financial meeting and put an agenda item to form a co-building committee and then go forward.
So this is actually different from what's spelled out in the Cherahoe?
Absolutely.
Discussion on the amendment. Barbara? This, this, the amendment's being voted on, so we're tackling the amendment, which is basically just changing the name from School Building Committee to Five-Year Capital Plan Building Committee. Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Those in favor? Thank you. Opposed, abstaining? George abstained. Thank you. Now, back to the original recommendation as amended. Discussion from committee members? Barbara?
Barbara Capalbo-Hopkinson. So I wasn't clear on this five-year plan that you are anticipating. Are you planning on having members of the public from the three different towns? I understand it's not a building committee because not building a specific building, but it would be good to have members of the citizens of the towns to be part of that long-range thought process.
We have one position for a community member.
Exactly, and my understanding is, I thought you said it's only one position.
Correct.
Someone who knows carpentry and mechanics or architectural. So you'll not have someone who's interested in the town as a whole. I'm interested because Hopkinson may indeed have many more houses, which means we'll have many more students.
Right, that voice is left to the elected official.
I can't hear you.
The voice that you're looking for is actually the elected official, the school committee member that's participating in that committee. That would, that would be my interpretation of that.
I would think it wise to have someone from the town, as a citizen from the town, as sort of a general factotum.
Okay, thank you. Now, Bill and then Craig. He actually jumped you.
My understanding, we're following rule, state regulations and how we set this committee up. So we're not, we're not trying to circumvent anybody.
Correct.
If we want to get the $100,000, this is the first step.
Correct.
And go in that direction. So I don't think we're, we're citing anybody. It's the way the state wants things done, and if we don't do it the way the state wants things done, we just say, they're gonna turn to us and say, hey, you didn't follow our guidelines, so you don't qualify.
Understood. Craig?
I have several questions, but first to at least make Barbara feel better. Being on the CALA Building Committee, we had voting members at the meetings, we had non-voting members at the meetings, and even the non-voting members still had quite a say. We respected their opinions and we probably took up quite a few of their opinions and suggestions. So I really think there's nothing to worry about there. That's my opinion.
I'm sorry, he's, just, he had a number of questions. We will get back to you on the counterargument.
And Mr. Ritchie, can you please elaborate, because I asked you this the other day, so at least others hear it. One person, I'm trying to find the way it's written here, community member with architectural, engineering, construction experience to the committee. Can you at least elaborate to people what we're looking for there?
That's required by the school construction regulations. So in my next newsletter, I'll be asking for interest. So someone with engineering background, construction background, architectural background, we would welcome that input.
And my last question is in reference to the final sentence. Is it carved in stone May 1, or is that flexible?
Well, it's your, it's your motion and your action, so you can always change your action in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. George, you have your hand up.
Ultimately, could this result in a bond proposal?
No. By itself, like, as a state?
When they come up with a building that might cost, let's say, 15 or 20 million dollars?
When you say could result in, there would have to be a number of steps that would come after, but that committee would not be authorized or legally able to authorize a bond.
Okay, but when would a regular building committee be formed to authorize a bond?
Well, it may never be formed, because the recommendation is gonna come back to you, and you're gonna have to make a decision about that. Do I want to proceed with our co-building committee under the Cherahoe Act that would have the authority to issue bonds? That's gonna be a decision made here. This group would not have that authority legally.
Correct.
So your recommendation?
Right.
Barbara?
So then the next question is, this, these meetings are going to be public, so anyone may attend, and I thank you for your comments. I was one of those members at the CALA meetings. So is this public? Are the meetings going to be public?
Yes. They have. They would be, yes?
Hmm?
Of course.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Are we ready for the vote as amended? Okay. Those in favor of the recommendation as amended? Those abstaining? George. Thank you. Letter B.
I recommend approval of the school committee meeting scheduled for 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve school committee 2020 meeting schedule. Any discussion? Nope. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. RICAST data assessment.
So we do have our RICAST results, and they're very good. We are not able to tell you the accountability results tonight, because that information is embargoed, but Jane will give you the overview of the raw, raw data.
I'm gonna use the podium just for the microphone. Hi, good evening. So like Mr. Ritchie said, we have our RICAST results for this year, and that test is given to students in grades three through eight in English and math. And so that's given in the spring, and we just, the results were just public in the last month. So the next step will be the accountability data, which will come out and give each of our schools a report card, and that'll be the next information. But this is one piece of that report card, and it's really valuable data that we look at. So the first thing I wanted just to look at is how we compared to how we did last year. So when we look at English Language Arts, the percent of students meeting and exceeding increased by 4%. So we went from 54 to 58%. And the other thing I want you to also notice is the percent of students that are not meeting, that's the ones that score in the lowest category, but we continue to decrease that percent, which is also very important. So we want to move up the kids that meet and exceed, but we also want to decrease those kids that are scoring at the lowest level. So that decreased from 7 to 6%. And then when you look at us, and one of the things that Mr. Ritchie has done to continue to inspire our administrators, is for them to look at our scores in comparison to how Massachusetts performs as a state and also as Rhode Island performs. So when you look at us in English Language Arts as a district, 58% of our students meet and exceed the expectations, but for the state of Massachusetts, it's 52%. So we're actually 6% higher than that state, and then for the state of Rhode Island, it was 38%, and that's for this school year. The other thing, again, I'm gonna mention is the not meeting. So 6% of our students were not meeting, but 11% in Massachusetts, so we're actually also doing better there in comparison. And some highlights, when you look in the top 10 and you look at our schools in the district compared to other districts in Rhode Island and schools, our school district was number seven overall, highest scoring in English Language Arts in Rhode Island. And then Charlestown Elementary School was the seventh highest Rhode Island public elementary school, and Ashaway was the eighth. And again, that's in the ELA scores. The next thing is just to look at how we did by grade level. So you're gonna notice that in grade three and then grade seven and eight, we actually did better this year than last year. And in grade three, you're gonna see that we went up 16%. So 59% of our kids last year in third grade met or exceeded. This year it was 75%. So we made huge improvement there. And in eighth grade, we also increased 10% compared to last year. And then the next graphic that you're looking at here, and that's in the packet, is when you look at our scores compared to Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And again, in grade three and grades four, grade five, and grade eight, in all of those grades, we score higher than the state of Mass at that grade level and Rhode Island. And another real highlight, I mentioned to you that at Charlestown and Ashaway, they were in the top 10 for English for elementary schools. Also, at both of those schools, over 70% of the students are proficient in ELA. I use that as a measurement, because that was called out in the Boston Globe for a measurement that they looked at for schools where the kids were over 70% proficient, and so I thought that was important to mention. Then we look at our math scores. They're, they're not as good, but we continue to improve compared to last year. The percent meeting and exceeding compared to last year was 47% for the district compared to 45%. And again, look at not meeting. We were at 7%. That decreased to 5%. So we are making improvements on both ends. And when you look at our scores compared to Massachusetts, we are close. We're at 47% meeting and exceeding, and the state of Mass is 49%. So that's what we want to target for next year, to surpass that and do even better than the state of Massachusetts. Rhode Island, it's at 30%. And again, look at that red, the not meeting. We want it to be zero, but we have 5% for a district, and the state of Mass is 12%, and Rhode Island's 21%. Some top 10 highlights. So I talked about where we ranked in terms of ELA as a district. In math, we ranked number ninth overall compared to the other Rhode Island public districts. And then when you look at our schools, Ashaway again, and Hope Valley, we're in the top 10 for math. Ashaway was ranked number six, and Hope Valley was number nine compared to the other Rhode Island public elementary schools. When you look at our two-year comparison, just within our district, we improved grade three, grade four, grade five, and grade six. So in all of those grades, we did better this year than we did last year. And then when you look at how we compare to Massachusetts and Rhode Island, again, we, we, grade three and four really stand out in those elementary schools where we're doing much better than the state of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. For third graders, 58% of our third graders met and exceeded the expectations compared to the state of Mass where it was 49%. And then in fourth grade, 69% of our students met or exceeded expectations compared to 50% for the state of Massachusetts. Another thing I wanted to just point out, I mentioned to you the Boston Globe, so Ashaway was called out in the Globe because, again, they were over 70% for ELA proficient, but also 71% of the also 71% of their students were proficient in math. So at that school, both in English and math, students were proficient over 70% of the body. What are we doing about those results? So we're meeting with principals to review and analyze the school's results. Principals are doing continuing researching data for comparable districts in Massachusetts to use that information to raise the expectations. They're doing school visits in Massachusetts, looking at data, seeing where we compare, and seeing where we can improve. We're also looking at test item analysis, so question by question, we're looking at how we did on each question compared to the state compared to Massachusetts. And some, there's more released items this year than last year, so that's very helpful, the actual questions the kids had to answer. There's more of them that we can see. They don't release all of them, but they definitely released more this year, so that's really helpful when we try to analyze the results. And we have a new analytics and assessment platform this year that we've been rolling out, and so far, that has helped us to really do a better job of delivering our quarterly common assessments at the middle school, and in the next month, our elementary common assessments. In the same way that students take the test for the state testing, it will be on a similar platform, so that will help students be prepared, and also the questions themselves. We're constantly reviewing our assessments and making sure they're best aligned to the expectations in the curriculum. That's in our Charahoe curriculum, but it's also the Common Core State Standards and how they're tested on it for RICAS. So that assessment and analytics system is continuing to improve this year, and we keep working on it. And then the next slide just shows what that student report looks like. Student reports were already sent home in October, so families have those for their individual students. There's a lot of good detailed information on there. There's also a student growth score, which shows how your child did compared to their peers, and then some resources for parents if they would like to learn more. And that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Jane. Bill.
I have two questions. Excuse me. Do you believe there's any correlation between the fact, I know we have some very hardworking and dedicated principals and teachers in our district, but do you think there's any correlation between the fact that Ashaway and Hope Valley School are the two smallest schools in our district and have class sizes that are not as at the top of the class size as the other two elementary schools in the district?
I wouldn't say that. I think that class size, certainly we do a good job in this district of making it fair and consistent across the district, so I think that we do have good class sizes here, and I think that does contribute to our overall elementary scores. You know, I think that one of the factors Ashaway, in speaking with that principal in Hope Valley, really discussed was how they use data and the data cycle with their teams of teachers on a consistent basis, looking at data results and then seeing how can they change instruction on specific targeted standards they identify, monitoring that instructional change over a course of four to six weeks, and then reassessing and seeing those results. And that's what the principals really attest to why those scores have improved and have continued to do better. And Charlestown this year also went, you know, increased their results, and they were in the top 10 for ELA. So I know that some of what she spoke about this year was that they used the, we did a PD with the school on the RICAS released items and scoring the student work and having a better understanding of the expectations of what students should be writing on their assessments and how they should be performing, and then teachers were able to do a better job of making sure that students were better prepared for the test. So Charlestown is another school that was in the top 10. So I wouldn't say necessarily it's school size, but I do think that certainly we're very fortunate here to have class sizes and also a great support system of RTI to really support students that are falling behind. And I think that's why the percent of students not meeting is also very low.
If I could, if I understand what you're saying, then it's all about how you report this system as to whether the children are getting the education that we think they're getting district-wide.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Tell me that I'm wrong, that you didn't just say that the reporting had a lot to do with it.
Reporting.
No, the information.
No, what I felt I was trying to say was that the use of the data, that at the school level, the teachers using the data that they get from these tests and other tests throughout the school year, things like common assessments they give to students. We also have something called STAR testing, which is used for RTI to identify students who need support. The use of all of that type of data throughout the school year by teachers, and then using that information to change their instruction and really target what individual students need, I think that's what works, and I think that's what's helped us to really have improved scores.
Okay. My last question then is, how confident are you that the state will be using this same test procedure next year or the year after?
I'm very confident next year, this current year, because we've had all kinds of webinars in the past few months just about the testing that's going to happen this spring. So that plan is in place, and like I said, they've already started to prepare us for the testing this spring. So RICAS, to my knowledge, is definitely happening this year, and I haven't heard of any plans to make any changes. Actually, I've only heard the contrary, that people realize the importance of sticking with one assessment, but I certainly can't speak for the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia.
I don't understand, first of all, why we're always comparing ourselves to Massachusetts, but I know that the media makes that the perfect state for education. Last time you presented something, Jane, it compared all of the schools in Rhode Island to all of the schools in Massachusetts, and you didn't score as well. I like comparing us to Charlestown because we are in the top, and that way we get a better picture of how we are doing rather than taking in Central Falls and everybody knows about schools in Providence, and Charahoe should be judged alone. So I appreciate that.
Any further?
I know it's not in this presentation, but any data that you can possibly share maybe later on where the Richmond Elementary stands in the whole of this testing?
Sure. I could certainly be glad to do that. And on the last slide, I believe there is a link to the statewide results, and you can also look up any school in the state, but I'd be absolutely happy to share that information with you.
Great.
Jane, could you just elaborate, at least for the purpose of the camera and the microphone, what RTI is, please?
Oh, sure. Thank you for asking. Response to intervention, and it's a system set up to make sure that, essentially, that students aren't falling through the cracks, that we screen students throughout the year. We have benchmark assessments, and then based on those results and team meetings with teachers with input from teachers and administrators, we identify students that might need additional support, and that tier-two or tier-three type of support beyond what the classroom, what tier-one the all students receive.
And is this across the board, K through 12?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment that I think that's, the scores going up, the percentages, is just a, you know, thank you to your staff and the work that you and the central office of the Board of Ed, they, you know, I mean, this is just amazing. I mean, scores going up is what we want, and that's what's happening, so I don't think we have anything to be concerned about at this point.
Thank you.
I think it's all a good thing.
George.
Just personally, I was quite impressed with you.
Thank you very much. The teachers have worked hard and they take it seriously because they want our students to be able to perform well. And, you know, it's not about a test, it's about really, you know, doing our best to prepare students for the future, and this is one indicator, but it's nice to have this indicator be positive and show improvement.
Barbara.
I really want to thank you too. I know the amount of work the school administration, the teachers, the school committee has done over the last 10 years is really amazing, and you have brought them up just wonderfully. We are not a model, but children change, issues change, so some children that did well one year won't do well the next. And so it is wonderful that you're being able to take a look at all of them and really try to work with them individually, but the amount of work done over the last 10 years has been really amazing, and it is all of your benefits, from the councils to the teachers to the students to the administration. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the committee? Thank you, Jane. This brings us to letter D, but Lisa's not here. Motion to table, we just tabled. Which, so item D under business, supporting adolescent sexual health for positive academic outcomes. This is on the agenda at the request of Ms. McBrusso. She could not be here tonight. I recommend that we table it.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda items.
A1 and 2?
A1 and 2 are polled. Who needs other items polled? Anyone? No?
We're set now.
Okay, we're set, sir.
Make a motion to move the remainder.
Motion in a second to move the remainder of the consent agenda items.
Second was right there.
Yeah. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Chair, make a motion to approve A1, the executive session minutes of October 22, 2019.
Seconded, thank you. Okay, so motion in a second to approve the executive session minutes. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Perfect.
Chair, make a motion to approve A2, regular session minutes of October 22, 2019.
Second.
Motion in a second for the regular session minutes of October 22, 2019. Discussion? Those in favor? Abstaining? Perfect. Thank you. This brings us, Mr. Ritchie, to reports.
We are on target to launch the Say Something Anonymous reporting system. We're doing a parent train this week. Threat assessment teams, as required by general law, are in place in all the buildings, ready to go. Susan and I went to the listening session before this meeting. Did you say about 15 people? 15, 18 people showed up, so we already have minutes from that meeting, which is a requirement for the grant. At a future meeting, I will be asking you to officially ask the town of Richmond to submit the grant and to include with it a letter of support for the grant, but we're not quite ready for that yet. That's why it's not on tonight's agenda. We did get notified by the, that they have given us one year to replace the Richmond School cesspool, which is at the right-hand side when you went to the driveway, between the driveway and the softball field. So we have one year to do that, so we're in the process of getting an estimate. The exterior cameras on the buses are, I don't want you to think we forgot about that. We're trying to find something, or Ocean State's trying to find something that's compatible with the existing camera system, taking a little longer than I would like, and I'm sure that, taking longer than some of you would like also. 11/13, which is tomorrow, is the Richmond School PTO meeting. Also, high school and middle school report cards are being issued. On the 14th, we have an early release day. 15th is the Hope Valley School Picture Retake Day. 15th is also the chorus benefit concert at George Kent Chorus Hall. 17th is the Richmond School Winter Vendor and Craft Fair. 11/21 is the High School Picture Retake Day, also this high school improvement team meeting. 21st is also the Class of 2020 II dine-in fundraiser at the Friendly's in Mystic. 11/25 is the Richmond School Picture Retake Day, and our Thanksgiving recess is the 27th, 28th, and 29th.
School committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. We already have two. In terms of these, these were posted, we have them, we've responded to them already?
What do you refer to?
Section 10. Is there anything additional we need on that?
I've given you everything we've received.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right. Any additional requests from the school committee for future agenda items, legal opinions, these types of things?
Can we just answer one question?
Yeah.
The X10-1 is basically the information that Bill was requesting for the FYI.
Correct.
So that's done.
Correct.
It's not for future.
Correct.
Let's just move it on.
This is Rodney Jeffress, so I guess I could, can I speak to this?
We can, yes. We're not getting to a discussion on it, but.
I believe that there is a lot of information out there that Richmond does not have or cannot find because that piece of property was purchased for $600. We, the district, did not build that tennis court. They did not make that pond. Somewhere along the line, that was done by the town of Richmond, and they don't seem to be able to find any material telling how this miraculously appeared on this piece of property. I realize John Anderson says, yes, we took it over, but I think, as I said earlier, I think we should have never taken it over back when we took it over in 1999, with the understanding that that was our responsibility. So we're probably stuck with it, but I still would like to hold the town of Richmond accountable to give us the information as to who paid for it and how long it was maintained by the town of Richmond before it became the district's responsibility, but.
So do you want this as a public agenda item?
Unless the town of Richmond wants to cooperate, it's, I'm just blowing in the wind here, you know?
Okay.
I'll maybe bring it up at a later date.
Okay.
I attended the last Richmond Town Committee meeting, and they said it's the school's responsibility, then I don't have anything to do fixing it or mowing the lawn or.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then the other one from Lisa. But no opens for the others. Okay, great. That brings us to the final item for this evening, which is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous.